Good evening and welcome. My name is Taylor Kingman, and as President of the Board of Trustees of the San Angelo Independent School District, I would like to welcome all of you who are here at tonight's regular board meeting. I also welcome all of those who are watching the recording of this meeting online or on our public access channel. We appreciate your interest in the activities of our students and the business of SAISD. All items that will be discussed at our meeting this evening have been posted as required by state law. Also, as you may be aware, our board meets a minimum of two times per month, and most, if not all, items have been previously discussed at our pre-agenda board workshop. As members of the SAISD Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, listen to reports from our superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the district. Please keep in mind that our meeting is a meeting of the Board of Trustees held in public and not a meeting of the public. However, we have a public comment item on every one of our meeting agendas that allows anyone present who wishes to speak to our board team on an item on our agenda or an item not on our agenda an opportunity to do so. Please provide your name and contact information and the specific topic you wish to address on the public comment form located at the back of the room should you want to speak on an agenda item or not an agenda item. Please listen carefully and comply with the following rules so that we can move through this part of the meeting efficiently. Each speaker will be given a total of three minutes. The district will provide an official timekeeper. The district's timekeeper will report and record the time. You will be notified when your time is up. Please respect the privacy of others and refrain from identifying students, employees, or other community members by name. Disruption of the meeting will not be tolerated at any time, and comments on any subject, whether positive or negative, must be courteous and respectful. Comments are limited to the specific topic you indicated on the form you filled out. Any speaker with a specific complaint about a district employee, decision, or operational issue should present that complaint through the appropriate mechanism, which is the district's formal grievance process. Speakers with a specific complaint will be referred to district administration for information about the grievance process. If you have pending grievance being processed by the district, you will not be permitted to speak about the grievance during public comment. Also, please understand, if you speak to us on an item not on our action agenda, that the board cannot reply except to thank you for your comments since the matter has not been posted for discussion. In compliance with state law, these proceedings are recorded and will become part of SAISD's permanent legal record. In order that the recording will adequately reflect the proceedings, I ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking. I also ask, as I remind my fellow board members, to please turn off or silence your cell phones. Again, thank you for being here and for your support of SAISD. We do have a quorum this evening. Mrs. Duncan will not be here in attendance this evening, but we do have a quorum with all, with six of the rest of us here. We're going to move forward with our invocation. Sam Young, who's Minister at Rams for Christ, is going to help us with that this evening. Thank you for being here.
Glad to be here. Thank you for asking me. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for today. God, we thank you for another chance to be together. Father, I want to say a specific prayer for this board. Father, I pray you grant them wisdom, courage, and ultimately love as they navigate the decisions of this district. Father, for the school district itself, for the faculty, the staff, and the students, we pray for a successful year. God, we pray for energy and peace. Ultimately, God, we thank you for the chance that we get to educate the future generations. And so, Father, we pray a special blessing over those tasked with that. Be with those teachers who are working each and every day to love on students. Give them peace and energy. And be with our students as they walk through a school year, as they experience joy and sorrow. God, we just pray that you would be with them, be with their families as they walk alongside them. So, Father, thank you for this district, for this board, for this administration. I pray a special prayer blessing over them. God, we thank you, we love you, we say all this in your son's name. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Everyone with stand please, we're going to do the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and invisible.
Thank you all. We are going to move forward with recognitions, and soon Shannon Short, Soon Cha is going to come up and help us with that.
Good evening, Dr. Kingman, Dr. Moran, and distinguished members of the board. Tonight's recognitions are all about expressing our gratitude for and to our numerous amazing community partners. First, we have the honor of recognizing an outstanding community partner and supporter of public education and literacy, HEB. With the help of HEB, we were able to supply a total of 81 students and their 121 siblings with books and goodies during our summer book patrol. We gave away 364 books. That is almost double the numbers from last summer. We sincerely thank HEB for helping us spread the love of reading and helping our students to become something substantial, meaningful, and impactful through the power of literacy. By contributing to the summer book patrol with generosity, energy, and dedication, he helped us not only ignite a love of literacy, but also to make the students feel special and connected to our schools during the summer months. For those who did not get to attend one of the deliveries, the children and their family's faces and excitement were a testament to this. HEB community coordinator Odessa Schmidt and HE Buddy even accompanied us on some of the deliveries. And if you could have seen the looks on the students' faces when they saw HE Buddy standing there with some goodies at their door. HEB provided healthy snacks and goodie bags for not only the students selected for the book delivery, but for every child in the household. Your contributions really helped us elevate this summer program to stand out to the kiddos and their families, and for this, we thank you. Tonight, on behalf of the awesome HEB team, we have joining us Joshua Jones, top store leader for our original HEB, David Rodriguez, top store leader for our newest HEB, and Odessa Schmidt, community coordinator and former San Angelo ISD teacher. Mr. Jones, Mr. Rodriguez, and Ms. Schmidt, if you would come forward so we could take a group photo. Everyone, please join me in giving HEB a very appreciative thank you.
Okay. Now I get to talk about the new to San Angelo ISD Team Tailgate. I had the pleasure of joining the fifth annual New to Teacher Tailgate during my second week on the job, and I can honestly say it was a blast. The annual tailgate-style celebratory event took place in the San Angelo Stadium parking lot and kicked off three days of professional learning to support and develop our new teachers. The new to SAISD Team Tailgate creeps growing every year, and this year, we had tremendous support from our community partners. We had a record-breaking 54 partners show out to love on our teachers, and we are so, so grateful for all that they do for our teachers. Our new staff received supplies for their classrooms, swag, educational instruction books, prizes, and treats, and they were very good treats. It is with sincere appreciation that we now recognize our new to the SAISD Team Tailgate partners. These local businesses and organizations participated in the tailgate and helped us welcome more than 100 new SAISD professionals to the district. So if you would please turn your attention to the screens, these are just some of our partners who helped come out and really treat our new staff members. So we extend a sincere thank you to each of these wonderful businesses and partners for the support of our new SAISD professionals, and I would personally like to thank Soon Cha from our department for maintaining and fostering these great relationships with our community partners because they really are a cornerstone in how we're able to provide for our staff members and our students. Thank you.
We continue with the theme of the importance of community partnerships and expressing our gratitude this evening by thanking another outstanding community partner and supporter of public education and literacy, United Way of the Concho Valley and their United We Read literacy initiative. They regularly partner with San Angelo ISD in our literacy initiative, San Angelo Reads. Earlier this month, both initiatives collaborated to host the San Angelo Reads and United We Read Back-to-School Pop-Up Event at the Foster Communications Coliseum. With the help of the United Way, we were able to host the largest reads event to date, which you'll hear about in our next recognition. But before we talk about what a huge success the reads pop-up event was, we would like to thank the special community partner who made it all possible, United Way of the Concho Valley and United We Read. With their partnership, we were able to provide 1,200 free hot dogs to event attendees. The United Way also had three tables at the event, which were filled with free books, free backpacks, and children's activities. So tonight, accepting this recognition, we have joining us Ashley Ammons, United Way of the Concho Valley President and CEO. Ms. Ammons, if you can please come forward at this time. We sincerely thank you and the United Way for your continued commitment and dedication to the hundreds of thousands of people who live in the Concho Valley. Your organization truly makes an impact on this great place that we call home. Everyone, please join me in giving the United Way of the Concho Valley a very appreciative round of applause.
Ashley, I'll just say, we look forward to making that a bigger event next year.
As I just mentioned earlier this month, San Angelo Reads and United We Read hosted the largest reads pop-up event to date. We would now like to recognize and honor all of our generous community partners who also contributed to the success of the San Angelo Reads and United We Read Back-to-School Pop-Up. The event's date of August 2nd created the perfect opportunity to take our reads pop-up events celebration of literacy and add an additional celebration, a back-to-school celebration with free back-to-school resources. With the help of support, with the help and support of community partners who participated in the event, we were able to put on a very successful and completely free event for the community and provide, like I mentioned, 1,200 hot dogs, Kona ice for children, hundreds of books, and valuable back-to-school resources such as backpacks, school supplies, services, coupons, valuable information, and much more. It's hard to say exactly how many people attended the pop-up, but what we do know is that we gave out 1,000 hot dogs, 300 free Konas, and that every single one of our community partners gave away everything that they walked in with. A safe and conservative guess of the number of attendees would be somewhere between, we think, 800 to 1,000 people. And just for comparison, our May 23 and December 23 pop-up events both had about 500 attendees. Our community partners are truly amazing. We simply could not make San Angelo Reads as effective or fun for our community without their support. It's extremely, it was extremely uplifting to see such a tremendous show of support for our community. So with sincere appreciation, tonight, we recognize all of our San Angelo Reads and United We Read Back-to-School Pop-Up Event partners. 60 community partners participated, and if you'll look up on the screen, you can see who our community partners are. And there's a lot of the ones that were just on the other graphic. We extend a sincere thank you to each of these wonderful businesses, organizations, and their special celebrity spokespeople and animals for their support of our San Angelo community, students, and San Angelo Reads. And we also thank our incredible departments and difference makers who were also there. Please everyone join me with a round of applause.
Thank you. We will now move forward with public comments. We have one person signed up for public comments, Michelle Beers. Topic is first day of school.
I just wanted to take a moment to come and talk to you all a little bit about San Jacinto's first day of school, which was today. And I am the principal at San Jacinto. With everything that happened with us having to move last minute, it was, it was a phenomenal first day of school. Our students were happy, our teachers were happy. It's, you know, we've had our challenges with getting moved quickly and being two campuses on one campus, but our teachers have worked side by side very well. And just seeing our students, they don't really intermingle, but in the cafeteria, they are both in there for lunch. But I mean, it was just, it just, everything flowed so smoothly. And so, I just wanted to let you all know that it was a successful first day and to thank you all for all of your support.
Thank you, Ms. Beers. All right. We're going to move forward with our agenda. Next, we're going to conduct our finance and audit committee workshop, and I'm going to turn that over to Mr. Dindell.
Thank you, Dr. Kingman. Normally, we'll do this during the pre-agenda meeting, so we don't bore you guys with some details, but we, our meeting was so early this month that we always review it before we approve it, so that's going to be later on in the meeting, so we're going to go over some of those, some of those figures. The bills and accounts for July starts on page 11 or 12. Page 15 shows the revenues expenditure report as of July 31st. Our revenues at that point were at 88.6%, which is about norm because the state usually finishes the, the last piece of the puzzle as far as our finances concerned, is concerned in that our budget is not, is not complete until August 31st. It doesn't follow the school year. It follows the calendar year of September to August. So revenue at 88.6%. Our expenditures at this point are at 89.1%. Some of those expenses are being, are a little out of whack for the moment, but there are some added expenses that we have added in some past budget periods, and they're being paid out of the fund balances, i.e. buses, maintenance, and some building projects. If you want to move to pages 17 through 29, that's our checkbook. All the checks that we wrote in July are on those pages. Any questions for board members on that? Page 30 to 33 is our investment report for the month. Page 30 is a comparison between June 24 and July of '24. The interest income in June of '24 was $315,000, and the interest income in July was $319,000. There's another comparative report on page 31, which is July of '23 versus July of '24. July of '23, interest income was $331,000. Interest in July of '24 was $319,000. Both healthy figures, adding to some of the projects that we're working on. Page 35 to 36, our tax collection report. Our collections for tax year 2022, we're at 99.72% of the collection. That's, that's an amount of $65 million. And the tax collections for tax year 2023, our collections are at 99.81%, and those collections are at $54 million. The difference is between the tax compression between tax year '22 and tax year '23. And page 37 through 46 is our PO report. Lots of things going on in July, August, September, trying to get school underway. PO report has furniture, licensing, STEM supplies, curriculum and instruction material, maintenance expenses, contract obligations, networking equipment, some band instruments, and also our yearly audit expenses included in that, in all those POs. Any questions about those reports? If not, that is the financial report for July.
Thank you, Mr. Dindell. Any further board questions or comments? All right. We're going to move forward then. We have a construction update, and Jason Henry and I believe Alan Wolf are going to help us with that.
Thank you for having us here tonight. We have Alan Wolf with Park Hill Architects, and he's going to go over our major construction project.
Thank you, Mr. Henry. Dr. Kingman, Dr. Moran, members of the board, thank you again for having us. Man, it's been a busy month since the last time we had a chance to visit. Just want to compliment your facility staff, all your teachers and principals, and all those who helped make in the move-ins of the different projects and just working around our construction. I appreciate very much their efforts. Wanted to just update you a little bit on McGill. If you've been by, you've seen a lot of work on, the site work. They're moving along at a very good, very good pace. We've already got mill work in the classrooms, which is great, so that, that's really going to help as they progress through finishing and completing the flooring. You can see the ceiling grid. In the next few pictures, you'll get to see that, but tile work's underway and acoustical tile's on the site, which is great, so that can be acclimated. This is kind of the outside picture. I think pretty easy to see if you're on Sherwood or Mill Spa, you can see all of this. This is kind of what the inside looks like, so you can see the tile work's gone up on the inside, and we're getting ready for floors. So it's really exciting. There's the classroom mill work there as well. You can see the other material that's stored on site. So they've really been making good progress, and we're in good shape for starting that next semester. Fannin, so Fannin, we had, again, I want to compliment all of your staff getting us with their, their efforts. And so I was actually over there this afternoon, and the kids are all in the classroom, the teachers are doing a great job, and I know that there was a lot of work completed to get everybody in, want to compliment and appreciate the efforts of all the folks on the city side as well for, for all the inspections. And we, I've got a slide here in just a minute that kind of describes that, but basically, we've got all the certificate of occupancy. There's still some site work, obviously, to be done. They actually started working on, we did a punch list on Tuesday last week, and they were working on that punch list of items this weekend. They still have some to do, but they are still actively working on those things. So you start seeing the, that site work and that area, that play area out in front takes shape here before our next board meeting, they'll get started on that. So wanted to show just a little bit, this is actually from today, so the exterior metal panels, they just lack a couple of pieces of trim up there on the outside, so it's really starting to look more like the rendering, which is what we were, we were hoping. And then this is the inside. You can see with the acoustic panels on the wall and the flooring. Got really good feedback on, on the interiors there, and so, you know, we're continuing to work through some of those other items on the outside. They got some, still some site work to do on the west side, but they got accessible route out to the gymnasium, so the kids can get back and forth there as well. This is what the restrooms look like. We got our ADA inspections all scheduled, and so that's kind of what the inside at Fannin looks like. Wanted to go on to Sousa as well. That was another one, another summer project, really came out well. You can kind of see the timeline there. Typically, we get, we do our punch list, we get the certificate of occupancy and substantial completion certificate, and then we schedule the ADA reviewers, so we'll, we'll group all those visits together, so we'll have the independent ADA inspector be out into the month, so, next week, so. But it looks great in there. This is, again, we kept the floor plan, but I think you all are all familiar with, with that area. I heard the teachers were really excited about that, the ones that were moved in there, so that's kind of the, the outside look there as well. So everything is, I think, as far as I know, going well over there, and like I said, I just want to compliment the teachers and staff for, here's the, here's your classroom look as well over there, so. Anything I can, any questions I can answer or help with this, this evening?
Any questions for Mr. Wolf? No? It was close.
Believe me.
Glad we're in the classrooms.
It was, yes, yeah, so the classrooms were done over there, and we had, there was some work that had to be done on that interior area and just, so I just, like I said, I know the construction team was working like crazy, and, and your staff, also your facility staff, Mr. Henry, I think was out there two or three times a day, and Dr. Brandon as well. And Dr. Moran, I know, did walkthroughs, so I, like I said, it took everybody to get there, and again, the construction partners as well, so.
Mr. Wolf, we still on track for McGill?
Yes. No, that's really tracking, that's really, really tracking well. I don't, I don't see any issues with that one being done. They're actually a little ahead of schedule, so.
Good news.
Well, I also want to reiterate just to thank you for, there were a lot of moves all over the district, some expected, some unexpected, and I just want to thank everyone who was a part of all of those things, from principals to administration to maintenance team to purchasing, everyone, the, the work that everyone did to get this school year started. I really appreciate everything, so I know the rest of the board does as well, so thank you. All right. Thank you, Mr. Wolf.
Thank you.
Now, Dr. Gomez, speaking of first days of school update.
Dr. Kingman, Dr. Moran, and members of the board. So we are so excited to have students back in our facilities. There's nothing that warms our heart like having students in our buildings. And Ms. Beers, we weren't complete until we had your students and Reagan students back in our buildings today. So we officially are at 12,818 students as of today, as compared to 12,00919 last year at this time. So it's the third day officially, but we're a little off with it just being the first day for those two campuses, so that just kind of gives you a comparison. And it was so smooth with those two campuses today, so thank you for your leadership and to Ms. Rudolph's leadership as well. As you said, Dr. Kingman, it was a group effort from everyone, from all departments throughout the entire district. Everyone jumped in, from leadership to purchasing, to everyone, just people did whatever it took. And that's really the power of a team. It wasn't about anyone's role, it was what do we need to do to make this happen to serve our students? And that's just the testimony of this great community. So some approximate numbers for all of you. We're at approximately 2,950 students at Central High School. Ms. Ross is here with us this evening, and so is Ms. Gossett. Approximately 1,075 students at Lakeview. We have some students enrolled with us at Carver. Approximately 1,246 students at Glenn. Approximately 780 students at Lone Star. 779 at Lincoln. 336 at Bel Air. 336 at Bowie. 446 at Bradford. 345 at Crockett. 441 at Fannin. 451 at Fort Concho. 415 at Glenmore. 514 at Goliad. 300 at Holloman. 510 at McGill. 173 at Reagan. 229 at San Jacinto. 356 at Santa Rita. 560 at Bonham. 557 at Lamar. So I went through those kind of quickly, just to kind of give you an estimate of where we were sitting at this time. If I skipped over any, I was just kind of going through that for you kind of quickly. And I can give you an account of those if you have any particular questions, as we are kind of tracking where we are. I'd like to give a shout-out to Lee Livingston, our new Director of Transportation. He was instrumental with his leadership as we started out. We are running 35 general education routes and 13 special education routes. Made a great impact on the beginning of the year. We, with Oaks, having our CTE students, I think that was a great impact for Central High School. So as a reminder to anyone watching and for the board, we do have both Lakeview High School students and Central High School students and Central High School students in our CTE programs. They are attending classes for career and technical education at our Oaks campuses. So there are still students there at Oaks as part of CTE. But definitely not like the numbers as we had in the past, but throughout the day, there's 450 students over the course of the day attending there at Oaks. Also, a shout out to Tiffany Hebert with Child Nutrition as we're serving students. Lunches so far at Central High School, we've served 608 breakfast meals, 1,129 lunch meals, 2,692 à la carte items. That's between two hot meal lines and four snack bar lines. That's two interior and two exterior lines at Sippum Cats. So that's a lot of food being served there at Central High School. And I think these ladies here in the audience can attest, that's a well-oiled machine. They are working wonders in that snack trailer out there. So if you haven't seen that operation, they have it down already in a very short amount of time. And I think we all know, it's very hot, so. They know what they're doing. Really want to give credit where credit is due to the staff at San Jacinto and Reagan for working just like true professionals. So we're in one facility, but they're doing what's best for kids. They're about whatever it takes. So San Jacinto is its own campus and Reagan is its own campus, but they're there to serve students. And that was, that's been seen all along. Within three days, San Jacinto was moved. Again, it was about whatever it takes. And those teachers from San Jacinto were moved to Reagan. K4 is in one hallway. The fifth grade classes are in another part of the campus. PE is in, there's only one gym, so PE is served in the one gym. And then music is in, the San Jacinto music class is in the multipurpose building. And then the Reagan music class is in its own room. So cafeteria, there's only one cafeteria. But they're professional and they're there to serve those students, so they're really working together. Then within the consolidations, you heard Mr. Wolf share, those Fannin and Altaloma teachers, it was very close. We were literally moving in the day before school starts to the new construction. In fact, we delivered trash cans in those new classrooms the morning school started. But it was about, let's greet kids and let's welcome them to the new facilities. They're super excited. Anytime you start in a new procedure, you're going to have some bumps along the way. There's new traffic patterns, but you're just excited to have a new school community. So we thank everyone for their grace and learning some new procedures, but it's just been great to have students on campus and to welcome them there. McGill and Austin, those teachers, those students, they've been wonderful coming together. So thank you to the board. Thank you to the community for creating these conditions where our students can have better resources. Do you have any questions that I can help possibly answer?
Any questions for Dr. Gomez?
I saw the question, do we still use the West Texas Training Center?
We do. We still have some welding classes out there. We still have some automotive classes out there as well.
I just wanted to let you know, I was at San Jacinto on Thursday with a lunch for teachers and so many teachers asked me to make sure that admin knew how very supportive they felt and thanked, to thank the admin profusely for all the help and turning what could have been a very difficult situation into one that just went so smoothly. And I told them I would tell you all publicly, so thank you all for everything you do.
Any other questions for Dr. Gomez? Just reiterate our thank you for getting all this done. I know that a lot of y'all were there sweating, moving things and probably some spouses as well. So thank you all for getting all of that done, so appreciate it. Thank you. All right, we're going to move forward with our consent items. We have consent items A through H. We have donations, we have minutes from our July 15th and July 22nd meeting. We have our proposed amendment for District Budget General Fund. No monetary differences. Consider proposed amendment for District Budget Debt Services. Consider proposed amendment for District Budget Child Nutrition. Consider 24-013 Office and Classroom Supplies. Consider 24-014 Printer Cartridges and Toner. And H, consider an update on T-Test Certified Appraiser List. These are all kind of ending, end of year financial things and office supplies, et cetera, that are fairly regular. Does anyone need anything pulled from the consent agenda? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve consent items A through H?
I'll move for approval of consent items A through H.
Second.
So I have a motion from Mr. Dindal and a second from Mr. Gallegos. Any further board comment? All in favor say aye. Aye. Motion passes six zero. Oh, sorry, all in favor say nay. Thought I heard everyone, but yeah. Motion passes six zero. All right. So now we're going to move on with our action items. And we're going to consider the approval of designating fund balances first. And Dr. Brandon is going to help us with that.
As you see in the General Fund Budget Amendment, Designating of Fund Balances, we have a... Sorry, that's what it is.
It's on one of two.
Screen up here.
Of ours.
Can y'all see the different fund balances?
We have a...
Keep going.
As you see on the screen for the designated fund balances, as we go through the year...
Should see a plus. There you go.
That's better. For all the, for all the different projects that we have throughout the year, we set that money aside. And then as those projects come up during the school year and bids go out, then that comes back before the Board of Trustees for that money to be moved out of designated fund balance. So it's kind of a placeholder as we go through the year until those projects are ready. And you see those for Revital, that's, you have seen that list work all across the district on many of our different campuses. Replacement of all the HVAC units that are 30 years or older is a big portion of that. We have about 8 million left in construction projects at McGill, a little bit left at Fannin. The 500,000, we have some security projects, some security fencing at some of our campuses that we'll finish. Of course, our property insurance, in case we have any type of storm damage, we hold that in reserve to pay the deductible. And then the E-rate match is much smaller this year because we're in, I believe, year five of the E-rate, and so we just have a small amount there. Our committed amount for the janitorial contract, and then the ones that you see at the bottom, Fund 461, 480, and 481, a little bit smaller amounts of money that we hold for expenditures in those areas. Any questions about any of those for designated fund balance?
So some of these are a continuation from last year. Like last year, I believe, the construction project was at 20 million, and so we've spent down 12 of that million. And then the Revital projects is things we do every year. Any questions for Dr. Brandon regarding the fund balance?
Yeah, I had a question on the insurance deductible. Is it just one deductible for the, so like we have five schools that get hit by something. Is that 750,000 just, does one deductible cause, cover the whole district?
So it's per event, and then they have a depreciation amount per campus, so that it's not 750,000 right off the top. That's just a placeholder for that amount of money, and it could vary depending on what the storm was, whether that's hail, wind, earthquake, you know, whatever, that happened in the district. So it's not an immediate one-time check of 750,000, but it could build up to that amount depending on how many campuses were damaged.
Yeah, but like, say you have, one campus gets hit one week, another campus gets hit the next week, another campus gets hit the next, does it cover, does this cover, I'm saying, do we pay one deductible for all, all three?
We do not, you're right. There would be different deductibles each time we have a separate event. Yes.
All right, thank you.
Any further questions for Dr. Brandon? So obviously, all of the, any purchase goes, comes back to the board before any of that money's actually spent, but for approval. But that's just kind of placeholder, so we make sure that we're keeping our designated fund balance in appropriate levels and we know what we have in excess to use for our unassigned fund balance for other projects. All right, do I have a motion from anyone? I'll make the motion. I'll make a motion that we approve the designated fund balances as presented in the resolution on page 102 and...
And I'll second.
And Mr. Dindal will second. Any further board comments or questions? All in favor say aye. Aye. All again say the same. Motion passes six zero. All right. Now we're going to move forward with our public meeting to discuss the proposed 24-25 budget and tax rate. And I believe Dr. Brandon's going to start us off before we get into our discussion.
So we'll go through a few slides just to cover kind of the basics of what we've done for the last, over the last two months for budget. And then we'll move into tax rate. So rather than separate out each one of those, it'd just be, I think it will flow better if we'll kind of go through the presentation and then the board will be able to act on each one of those agenda items individually. So when we start the school, I say school year, but the budgeting process, all of these things come into play. Our student enrollment, our ADA, our state revenues, our federal revenues, local revenues. And so we've kind of talked through all those different items as we've gone through for the last two months. But kind of the jump start is when we get our property values from the CAD. And you can see here our net taxable value at 6 billion 900 million there in the yellow highlight. That's for the entire school district. And then if we say, look at what, how does that compare to last year? We see that we were at 7.2 billion in the 23-24 school year, so we have a slight decrease to 6.93 for the 24-25 school year. From there, we take the property values and we look at all revenue streams for the district. So you can see from our local funding, there in blue are state funding and white, and then our federal funding in green, nearly identical from last year. $260,000 difference between those two years in revenue. And then we take from the revenue, we begin to generate our expense budget for the year. And you can see that we've balanced the budget as you look through the different payroll, contracted services, supplies and materials. This is our general fund operating budget with payroll being 82%, which that is fairly common in any Texas school district. Actually, this is probably a little lower. We have some districts that you see that would be mid 80s. So I feel like, you know, the district has done a good job in those areas. And then as far as the INS fund balance, the board each year sets the tax rate for the interest in sinking, for the bond payments. We have to meet that debt obligation to pay back the bond, so we know how much that payment is every year for the next nine years, and then we set that rate to make sure that we make the payment. So here you see that payment at 8,834,303. And so we have the tax rate at .11741 to meet that obligation. And something that came into play this past year as the state lowered, compressed the tax rate in M and O, we saw the homestead exemption go from 40,000 to 100,000. Certainly a benefit to all taxpayers across the district, but there's a hold harmless for the bond payments. Just because the property values were lowered, that's not something that we did, the state did that. And so they guarantee those funds to make sure that we can make those bond payments. So you see at the very bottom line, approximately 1.6 million in hold harmless funds estimated to be received due to the offset with the $100,000 homestead exemption. So what, if we look back at our historical rate in the district, San Antonio ISD for the last 10 years, the Board of Trustees has made the effort to reduce taxes year after year. We see the drop from 1415 at $1.24 all the way to 81 cents. Some of that certainly has been state compression, but also the Board of Trustees looking after that as well. The M and O tax rate compression, 18, 19, $1.4 down to 69 cents. And that's when we have, kind of had the conversation, right, about the golden pennies. The state allows for eight golden pennies. The school district, the Board of Trustees can elect to have five golden pennies, but the other three has to be approved by the taxpayers. The nice thing about the, and the whole reason they're called golden, is the state pays those at a higher rate. And so if you, for example, if you look at how that's generated, our current tax rate of .6949, there in the blue, right underneath our property values at 6.9 billion. So at that, at that tax rate, that generates from M and O revenue from the state, 67 million, and local taxes, 47 million. Well, the three, the three cents that could be added on as the additional three golden pennies generates 2 million in local taxes that would come... pennies generates 2 million in local taxes that would come from our taxpayers, but the state nearly doubles that, just over, and pays 4 million to the school district for adopting those other three golden pennies. So that three cents generates 2 million locally, but 4 million from the state. It's a win. I think the last time I was at a meeting at Texas Legislature, I heard, you know, one of the legislators ask, has, have all the school districts finally adopted all the golden pennies? And they said, no, not all of them. And then they seemed surprised because they pay almost double what's generated locally. So that's something that we've talked about, and that would be certainly a benefit to our school district, our students, and our staff. So that's our M and O rate that we talked about there, and then our INS rate, you see that drop from when the, back when the bonds in 2008. Those have been refunded a couple of times in savings realized in lower interest rates over time. I know at one point, one of the documents showed that the district was going to save approximately $7 million in interest by refunding those bonds at a lower interest rate. And so that was certainly proactive that the board, a choice that was made in 2015 and 2020. And now we're at the .11741, here it rounds to .12. And that's what we proposed in our ad for the public. In that, we've had conversation, when the 1.6 million became available in hold harmless funds, that there was the possibility of lowering the INS rate. The board has discussed several times the benefits of what the three golden pennies would do for the district in the M and O rate. So the question from the board was, how might we be able to realize no additional tax for the taxpayers and still take advantage of the golden pennies? So we've been, our financial advisor through Hilltop Securities has provided an analysis of what our interest in sinking looks like as we repay the bonds over the next nine years. It's a little hard to see here, so as you kind of blow that up, you see on the, under number one, that column, that's our property values. So our financial advisor has shown a modest, kind of a conservative 1% growth over that nine-year period. You see a 3% and then a 1% for the years after, and then the, just the simple principal and interest payment. And then our payments stay right around the $8 million mark each year until the bonds are paid for in 2034. On the other side of that, taking into account the 1.6 million in hold harmless funds, and we have money in the interest in sinking fund balance, that has grown over time because of the interest rate. And so we could take advantage of what you see there in columns six and seven, to where you see finally there in column nine, in the green, where the board has an opportunity or a discussion to lower our interest in sinking rate by three cents to be 8, 874, .0874, down from .11741. And so that is kind of where we are tonight, right? In our conversations about what, what is the proposed tax rate, and then what is the board's desire, looking at the different choices that we have considering M and O and INS. And then I'll open that up for the board for some discussion.
All right, thank you, Dr. Brandon. I'm going to keep you at your microphone, but you can use that microphone if you want, because I'm sure there will be questions that arise. And I guess what we need to do now is, we won't, so just to make sure we're all correct on our agenda, the actual setting of the tax rate comes at item D, but what we need to do now is have a public discussion regarding the tax rate. And so I'm going to open that up to members of the board.
Dr. Kim, and we've been working on this for a while, and also actually for years. We're starting to see some savings because of refinance back in 2020, to where we finally have some real numbers that we can pass on to the taxpayer and still service their debt. So again, right now, we're at, at .11741, and we're collecting at that rate. But should this board choose to, we could actually drop that rate and pass on to the local taxpayer a rate of 08741. Moving forward, in hopes that, in hopes that the, the public would recognize that the TRE is going to be a valuable piece of this puzzle. The, the state only allows us to tax at the rate that we are at, and they won't, we have to go to the public for anything that's beyond that, that standard rate. And so we, we recognize that point to the fact that we set our budget around the amount of our tax rate. So, but we see that the funds of M and O, Magnus in Operation, and Interest in Sinking Fund are not intermingled. The Interest in Sinking Fund payments go to your debt service, and your M and O goes to your operations. And so after doing some analysis and, and number crunching for the last probably year, we finally ascertained that we can move our, our INS tax rate potentially down to .08741 to pass on to the local taxpayer. I know the city doesn't, the city does not have to go to the public for any sort of tax increase, nor does the county, but the school does. But we're, we're actually going to offer a, a tax reduction on the INS side of our budget, or could offer that for the board's perusal to drop our, actually, INS rate to .08741, which gets the tax savings passed on to the local taxpayer.
I had a question for Dr. Brandon. So at the current rate, how much longer does it take to pay off our, our debt? You may not know that off the top of your head, but...
If we were to keep the rate at...
Turn your, turn your mic on.
If, if we were to keep the rate at the .11741, we could possibly pay the bond off one year early.
Okay, yeah, so, so not much, not much difference, really.
Right.
All right, thank you.
Other questions or discussion? Miss Maslow-Fenton, anything?
Yeah, Dr. Brandon, that, that INS fund balance is financed at a lower rate than we could ever hope to get in, in this timeframe. So that's, that's the beauty of the situation is that, do the refinance, it's going to be, it's going to be able to still meet our, our obligations moving forward and pay it off on an on-time, not early, but it's still on an on-time schedule.
Dr. Brandon, so I understand that we're, we were looking at decreasing the rate by three cents, hoping that the community would support the TRE. What if the community doesn't vote to pass it? What would happen to our budget then?
So the budget is built on the .6949. So we do have a balanced budget at that rate. The different things that the district would like to do in areas, you know, staffing and safety and security, curriculum, programming, all those things that are stagnant from not being able to realize any money, any additional money from the state, would all see a benefit if we were able to realize the three pennies. But if they were not, we will still balance the budget for the year, and we would still be able to meet our debt payment to make the bond payment this year.
Any other questions, Mr. Hayes?
No, I've been looking at this number for a week, two weeks.
Mr. Royal? All right. I was going to say a few things, just because I've been looking at it as well, and I just want to make sure that our community understands what we're looking at and trying to make sure that we're all on the same page, because I want to make sure that, as a board, we're on the same page before we go to actually voting on this and go from there. Obviously, as a statewide, 60% of districts have had to adopt a deficit budget this year because of not taking care of their fiscal cliff with Esther and stuff. And we've been able to propose a balanced budget for this next year based on our tax rate. That balanced budget did not include raises for our staff because there wasn't money to do that reproducibly over the next nine to 10 years, or even the next two years. And so for the public to be aware of the vote, the board voted a month ago, or a couple weeks ago, to use fund balance from our previous budget in order to give a retention bonus to all employees of the district, which does not affect their TRS or retirement. But it does, it was an attempt by our board to take into consideration the, our role as being, taking care of the students and the staff, but also our role as making sure that we're being good stewards of the taxpayers' dollars. The reality is, we are in a relatively, relatively property-poor district. Our, our district, as opposed to the city or the state, or the county, excuse me, which gets all their revenue from local revenue, from local tax dollars, our district gets about 41% of our revenue from local revenue, from local taxpayers, and 59% from the state. There's some districts that get, that are giving 80% of their money to the state so that they can give it to places like San Angelo, which is a blessing for us because it doesn't put that burden of trying to raise every penny locally needed to educate the students in San Angelo, and the state is aware that they need to augment the districts that are not as property-rich. That being said, we are still being funded by the state on numbers that were based on 2019. And the same reason our teachers and our maintenance crews and all of us at home realize that our groceries are not what they were in 2019. And so the, that goes back to our incentive, our retention that we gave earlier this month, but also the fact that we're trying to run a district based on 2019 funding. And the reality is, that was five years ago, and it was different. Everyone knows it was different. And so looking at the numbers, looking at the fact that we were able to change our, set our interest rates, or excuse me, our rates for our debt payments at a lower, those interest rates that were lower in 2020, we've been able to save $7 million. Interest rates currently on fund balance have allowed for that fund balance to increase in our INS. And even with stable appraisals and really no change in state or local government, we still able, state or local dollars, we're able to fund a balanced budget to the public. And so looking at the numbers, at least to me, and we'll put it up for a vote here in a minute, to me, it looks like because of the state's hold harmless, because of the refinancing and because of the INS, we should be able to pass, we should be able to lower our INS tax rate by three cents, still pay off the bond. And yet, we can, if the community, if we go out and make our case and sell it to the community, that what we need is to be able to recruit teachers, we need to be able to keep teachers, we need to be able to recruit plumbers and maintenance and electricians, that, and the way to do that is the fact that they can't make it on things that cost the same salaries they had in 2019 either. But if we can go out and, for a district that is property-poor such as ours, if we can go out and get $4 million from state money with the same cost to our local taxpayers of the 2 million, that if we can move one, from one bucket to the other, and just to be clear, we can't do that without a vote and without, we can't just use that $2 million to give a raise because it's in a separate bucket. But if we go out and make that case, then we have money to give raises to teachers and employee, and all employees. We have money for security, we have money for maintenance, and that, at the same time, we don't change the tax rate, overall tax rate for the taxpayer. And it brings in dollars from the state as opposed to just local dollars. So that's, that's where my head's at. I'm sorry, I kind of rambled, but I want to make sure everyone understood where...
Like you said, I mean, it leaves the tax rate the same, the current tax rate.
If we proposed an INS tax rate that was three cents lower...
If we proposed it three cents lower, then that would still leave our tax rate, current tax rate, at 8, 1, 2, 3, 1.
And even if we, so yes, even if the public votes with us to get the more dollars that are state dollars for those golden pennies, it would still be the same tax.
It's not increasing their taxes. It's, it's keeping the tax rate the same.
It would be maintaining the tax rate.
Maintaining the tax rate, what they would be...
The overall tax rate.
The overall, for every $100.
That's, that was my spiel. Dr. Moran, do you have anything you need to add for that?
Well, I would just say to the board, this, you, you talked about the rising cost of healthcare and inflation, and just the cost of living for employees. We're looking for any opportunity we can to provide better pay, and it's not just about our teachers, there's a lot of other people in our district, our clerical, paraprofessionals, our manual trades, and we want to do the very best we can for them. And the truth of the matter, it boils down to academics. We've got work to do in our district. We all know that. We've got a few campuses that are doing really well. We've got a lot of campuses that are in the middle, and we've got some that are really struggling. And if we're going to move the needle, we're going to have to hire great people, we're going to have to improve the people we've got and grow them, and just be better stewards of the taxpayer dollar. This is a chance for us to maximize state funding. And so I think the board's onto, onto the right track here. I think if the taxpayers will support the measure, it's going to do a significant amount of gain for our district, especially for our human resources offices as we consider pay increases to attract and retain those great employees.
Yeah, and that's a good point, Dr. Moran. While they call us a property-rich district, we're, we're a people-rich district. People want to work here, and we got you to come. But, you know, people want to be here, and so we're, we want to make sure that we're able to compete with other districts and keep people, our own people, and then get people here. So, all right, do we, any other comments or questions for that discussion? All right, we're going to move forward, then. We're going to consider the adoption of the 24-25 budget. Dr. Brandon, I know we did this last week, do you want to say anything? I know you kind of did it all just there. Do you need to, do you, we can go with what you just showed us, if... Maybe just go back to that slide, that's just the balanced budget for us.
Let's see, it's actually on... So this is just our revenue. We'd have to bring up, I think you probably have on your monitor, the actual budget.
Dr. Brandon, I'm going to hold up for just a second. I, I'm not sure, we're going to err on the side of adding public, well, one, we're going to err on the side of adding public comment, because I'm not 100% positive, although our board policy is to take all public comment at the beginning. Since we are, this, we were having a public meeting to discuss the proposed budget, I'm going to open it up for any public comment at this point, if anyone has any comment they want to make, if they could sign up. It would be about, it would only be about the budget and the tax rate at this point. I guess, I'm going to hand this back to you. I guess, I'm going to, soon I'm going to hand this back to you. the meeting. All right, we're going to start with Ms. Ginger Moore, and topic is obviously budget and tax rate. Thank you, Ms. Moore.
My name is Ginger Moore. I lived in San Angelo for 40 years, and I've been to several of these over the years, mostly on curriculum and math. But I would like to talk on taxes because I have been to the appraisal board meeting, which I was, was astounded at how, how that one was. That needs improvement. I have been to the city council, the Tom Green County Commissioners Court, and now I'm here. So I would just like to say, one of the things the taxpayers have an issue with is the amount of money that is paid to the higher-level people and not to the teachers. That's a huge issue in San Angelo, and I just wanted y'all to know that this is, this is one of the reasons you may have a hard time with getting this passed in November, because people look at the amount of money you pay to the higher-level echelon in this, in this hierarchy, and all of the amount that you pay for all the additional help that you get for the higher levels, and the teachers are not getting what they need. And I think if you took a little away from the top, you might be able to give more to the bottom. And that's just my, I'm not, I'm not on your board, so I'm not seeing this every day. I haven't come very often lately. But I just think that that might help if you just took a hard look at how many extra positions you have at the top and give those down to the... And also, I know that State Board of Education is working on the curriculum, and Aaron Kinsey is working this very hard, and he's also working on a lot of other issues for the, for you. So just, and thank you for your service, because I know that this is not an easy job. You probably get calls at midnight, so thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, next, we're going to move forward with Mr. Pacetti, and his topic is also budget.
Hello, my name is Virgil Pacetti. You know, I understand what y'all are doing to try to help the community out by, you know, you got a good favorable interest rate for your bonds, so why pay it off early? You know, you got cheap money, so, you know, that makes sense. You know, if you get a cheap interest rate on your house, why would you refinance it at a higher rate? I mean, that's just logical. So, you know, lowering your INS really doesn't cost us anything on the back end. You know, you, you got into that good money, and so you're using that as a tool to lower that, to then incentivize the public to come out and give you the three cents, which is matched two to one by the state. And anybody that's ever worked for a company, you know, if you get a 401K, match it 6%, you're going to do the 6%. You, you know, it's free money. The thing comes down to trust. There's, you know, I've been here for two years trying to get help for my son at Bowie, you know, trying to get things to different places, and for some reason, there's always these roadblocks. And so I know what you're about to say, I'm going off topic. If you would build trust with the community and say, hey, when we get that extra, you know, at no cost to you, we're going to get this $4 million, where's it going to go? Do, do we trust you to give you that $4 million? We're afraid it's going to go to things that, you know, things that don't matter. You know, if you would sit down, and I know your consultant that came here said, hey, all you have to do is get the boomers to do that tax rate, and everybody else has to pay for it, and you don't have to do these town hall meetings because it doesn't buy you anything. If you would sit down with us and say, hey, here's where the money's going to go, we'd probably be more likely to give it to you. But did you just write you a blank check? I think at this point, no. So, for what it's worth.
Thank you, sir. All right. Now, we're going to move forward with the adoption of budget, which is item C. I think Dr. Brandon really already presented that, unless someone has questions before we move forward with that, then I think, do I have a motion to approve the resolution to adopt the 2425 Maintenance of Operation Food Service and Debt Services budgets as discussed and presented?
Dr. Kingman, I've moved to approve the resolution in order to adopt the 2024-2025 Maintenance and Operation Budget, Food Service Budget and Debt Service Budgets by fund and function as discussed and presented.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion from Mr. Dindal and a second from Mr. Gallegos. Any further board comment or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0. Next, we're going to consider the adoption of the 24 and 25 MNO tax rate and INS tax rate. I can make a motion on that, just since I was, I've been writing things in front of me for the last couple of minutes. So I would make a motion that we consider adopting the ordinance to set the total tax rate at 0.81231 for the 2425 school year. The rate being allocated is 0.7249 of the total rate is specifically levied for the maintenance and operation expenses, and then an INS, total INS or debt service rate of 0.08741. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion for myself and a second from Dr. Mills. Any further board comments or questions? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All against, say the same. Motion passes 6-0. All right. So now, we do have to do item E because we did item D in the way we did. So now, item E is on page 109. That would be to consider in order to call a voter approval tax rate election as, as discussed and presented. Any board questions, comments? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the order calling a voter appraisal tax rate election as presented.
So I have a motion from Mrs. Mizel Flint. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second from Mr. Dindal. Any further board comment or questions?
Dr. Kingman, just a reminder that we're, we decreased the tax rate, hoping that the community will support us to bring the tax rate back to where it is so that we can afford to pay for things like raises to teachers, security and maintenance for our facilities.
Thank you, Ms. Mizel Flint. Any other board comments or questions? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All against, say the same. Motion passes 6-0. All right, so now we have announcements. We're going to have our finance and pre-agenda workshop on September 9th at 5:45, and then we will have a regular board meeting on September 16th at 5:45. I have no reason to go into executive session unless anyone else does. All right. With that said, we'll call this meeting adjourned. Thank you all for being here.